And to the Republic for which it stands, innovation underground, individual with liberty as its source.
Item two, adoption of the agenda.
Do you want to make the motion to approve it with changes, or do you want to make the changes first?
I should just make the motion, amend the motion.
Make a motion to approve and then amend it to add the executive session.
Yes. Motion made to approve, is there second? Is there any discussion?
Motion to amend to go into executive session after fourteenth. And invite the town manager in for half of it and for the whole thing, and then Tony in for half and the chief in for the other.
You all did that?
Yep.
Motion was made to amend, was there second? Those in favor of the amendment, signified by saying aye. Those nay? Those in favor of adopt adopting the agenda as amended, signified by saying aye. Those nay? And as amended is adopted, item three, approval of minutes.
We took approval of minutes.
Second.
Motion is made seconded for the proof, is there any discussion, any errors, omissions, or changes to the minutes presented? There are none, those in favor of minutes presented, signified by saying aye. Those nay? That would be minutes of October twenty eighth, they're moved. Item four, public remarks, is there anyone who wishes to make public remark or comments at this time, yes sir? Just give your name and address.
Hey, Town Council, my name is Ryan Baldesario, Nineteenth Sunset Drive, East Hampton. I'm here on behalf of the East Hampton Brown Fields redevelopment agency and the EH B R A. Wanted to give you a quick update for the returning members of the council and new folks joining about some of our recent efforts. So in the past, I've been on the agency since twenty twenty and I moved to town with my wife and family and been the chair since twenty twenty-two. Currently, we are working through two different grants that we earned from town, a five hundred thousand dollar grant from the federal EPA and a two hundred thousand dollar grant from Connecticut Department of Economic Community Development. We've actually spent down the D E C D funding grant in full and we're about halfway through both the grant funding and life cycle of our EPA funding. This is just a quick update, the EH B R A, our task is to resolve the brownfield portfolio that we have in town and those are environmentally contaminated sites that need to be assessed, cleaned up, and hopefully redeveloped in a particular way. There's a variety of different state and federal regulations about what steps need to be taken. Generally speaking, you have to assess what the environmental contamination is. You do remediate or clean that in a particular way and then hopefully do something with those properties. We've narrowed down our brownfields properties in the town to four, Thirteen Summit, one, and thirteen Watchers, and three Walnut Avenue. The most time sensitive thing that we have coming up is that the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, or D has funding available for the remediation and development of green spaces. At one of our properties, three Walnut Avenue, which is the grassy area behind Center Package Store and next to the fire pump house, is really ripe for that type of cleanup. Our goal is to eventually, with public consensus, is to change that currently vacant grassy area into a more publicly friendly and accessible space that can be used for public events, could be further incentivize visitors off of the airline trail, and to serve as another platform for us to be able to host things like farmers markets or, you know, kind of runoff from things like Old Homesteads and other major community events. And not just to put another parking lot somewhere else that we can have more parking, but to allow our our community members to benefit from these green spaces. That application will be submitted to DEEP on behalf of the town in early December. We're working to find what is at our next upcoming meeting in November, but just wanted to give you a heads up that we're continuing looking to find ways to fund these opportunities outside of our town provided funding to use our tax dollars that we chip in for as effectively as possible. And as we continue to work through these processes, we've been working with other town agencies, we have two members on the Plan of Conservation and Development Planning Committee, and we're participating in those public comments and public events so that we can continue to get public feedback about what we want to do with these properties. Right now, we should be able to cover all the first step, that environmental assessment in our remaining properties with the funding that we have. We may ultimately have to apply for more assessment funding to how we see result at Thirteen Summit, which is the largest and most polluted property in our brownfields portfolio. But as we continue to work with our town-approved environmental consultants, V H B, we'll continue to share updates with Town Council, let you know where we stand on that. And if there's any way that we could, you know, work together to continue to get public feedback on these efforts. That's mostly it. I don't know if you folks have any questions, I could answer them, but I just wanted to give you that update from our agency.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, I just I'd just like to say, I think that your agency done a wonderful job and I know it's very difficult. And we, I think we all commend you on what you're doing and keep up the good work.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ryan, obviously, we Jackson's, a one question, will there be a, like a formal public presentation as far as, okay, where are we, you know, on a map, what we think this could or should be used for?
Yes.
To get as much public input as possible.
Yes, thank you for that question. So our goal is to, we want to get a little bit further in the assessment process to kind of figure out what the scope of the contamination is and we are in good stages on that project and we're making active progress on that front, but the next stage is to do some more direct community involvement, community-focused events. And that would give the opportunity to say where we are timeline-wise, what to expect the next steps, and to get community feedback of what we could potentially do with these sites, what's actually clean and able to make progress. We have been working with UConn TAB, which is, the University of Connecticut has a brownfields program that's funded by the EPA. And they use staff and faculty and students to work and provide free services to municipalities and they've worked with us to give us some mockups of what some of these properties could look like, to help inspire the community about what options are available, what's realistic, what will make the most sense, what complies with environmental justice initiatives and aquifers and all these different environmental laws. But yes, the the goal is to let the community know, hey, where are we right now? How how have we been doing this over the last twenty years? How close we are to a finish line or not? So yeah, the the goal is to do that in the first two, three quarters of twenty-six.
All right, so you envision a a public get-together?
Yeah.
One or more.
Yeah, be the town council or not, it could be town hall with library or somewhere publicly available with enough space, but yeah, we're going to do multiple sessions.
And perhaps other marketing as well. You know, River East.
Oh, yeah, so when we actually get the
Full scale of that sort of thing, I think there's five, five or
Oh, yeah, no, we, that's, A, it's very component, there's a huge component of the grant funding that we have, that we have to do that kind of work. But also, that's going to get the most buy-in and actually get us to progress, is actually having good consensus on the community. The only thing is three walnut right now, just based on density, there's not really much you can develop there.
Yeah.
And the funding we're applying for is specifically for usable green space, as opposed to any sort of residential or kind of fiscal components, mostly just for usable green space.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any thoughts?
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to make public remarks or comments at this time? Not moving on. Item five, presentations.
You have no presentations this evening.
You, and item six, bids and contracts.
Also no bids or contracts this evening.
Moving on. And item seven, A, resolutions, ordinances, policy proclamations, review and possible action on resolution from captive entities, you know, the belt press.
Thank you, you have an item in front of you that the Town Council is being asked to authorize on behalf of the Joint Facilities Committee. Recall that the Joint Facilities Committee is a, is an entity created by the towns of East Hampton and Colchester that manages the operations of the wastewater treatment plant that we co-own and serve in total five communities with. Joint Facilities has a fair amount of its own authority and ability to contract and make purchases and the like. But only the Town Council can make available to them tax-exempt financing, which of course is financing that the seller of which does not pay taxes on, and therefore the rate is somewhat lower for the purchase. So Tony is here from the wastewater treatment plant, if you want to know more about the belt press itself and talk about that, but basically, Joint Facilities is asking for permission to use tax-exempt financing to offset the cost of the purchase of the belt press that's being replaced at the wastewater plant to avoid having to use all of the capital funds or most of the capital funds that they have available to them on this particular project. They have some installation coming on the job as well that they may either pay for out of their pocket or may come back and ask for additional tax-exempt financing. So that's the question, that is the goal, that is the request of the Joint Finance or Joint Facilities Committee.
Is that belt press that's failed or failing? Is that the original?
I don't know if it's the original.
It was installed in nineteen The belt press, excuse me, the belt press that we're replacing was installed in nineteen ninety-one. It has a twenty-year design life and a typical thirty-year useful life, so it's well past its useful life.
Any other questions?
So are, is this going to be general obligation and then they're just going to pay the bond back, or what is?
Since he asked you directly, I'll let you answer.
Well, I figure he's the one that's going to answer.
Step into the microphone.
Yes, sir.
Director.
It's, it's not bonds in a sense, it's, they call it tax, it's a tax-exempt lease, it is a tax-exempt financing, it's just under the interim government code, it's just handled a little bit differently. It it's an obligation effectively of their body, because they're going to be responsible for paying the, paying the debt. These types of leases have non-appropriation clauses built into them, so if they don't get an appropriation, pay the lease payment, they don't pay it, but then the leasing company could then disassemble the the equipment. It would be a ding on us.
That's my question, are we financing for Marlboro, Colchester, everyone, are we using our credit for them as well?
We're not necessarily getting a credit rating and and the amount is so small, it it has no impact overall, it's like, it's eight hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars, so relative to our thirty-eight million dollars of outstanding debt, it's relatively insignificant.
Which I understand, I'm just going back to when we were talking the sewer and they asked for, you know, bonds to be issued by the taxpayers of East Hampton to fund other communities and so I understand that it's a lesser rate, but the reality is, is the tax, if something was to happen, the taxpayers of East Hampton are going to have, are the ones that are going to end up paying that.
We would most likely, yeah, we would not default on that.
Correct. That's Meanwhile, there's no obligation for Colchester or Marlboro, correct?
It's going to be paid for the, by the user fees from from joint facilities.
I I understand, again, the taxpayers of East Hampton are covering
Correct, yeah.
The cost for
That's correct.
Other communities, which I have a philosophical problem. Only in the case of a default, if we decided to pay it. The other municipalities have to pay their rates and therefore have to pay, it has to be included in their budget.
Any questions, comments?
I just want to make it clear that we're talking about joint facilities money. This is not East Hampton taxpayer dollars that we're spending right now, it's money that joint facilities holds for, from user fees that were paid.
Correct, correct.
And it's bonds, it's not, or it's a lease.
Right, but that's how it's being paid, it's not our tax dollars, you're not paying.
But it's like we're cosigning.
Correct.
Your motion to, I move to approve the bonds for this lease, or whatever the right terminology is.
You have a resolution, so you would go with the resolution authorizing.
Now, where's the town, we read this whole thing, where's the town?
No, it's just to make a motion to
Just make a motion.
A gas resolution.
Move to approve the resolution as submitted.
Second.
Any question, any discussion? Not, those in favor of the resolution, signified by saying aye. Those nay? Nice to have. Moving on in the agenda. Eight, continued business, subcommitting reports, you know, things. Do you have any subcommittee reports?
Is this where your might, the chairman, is this where your might report on the fire subcommittee, for example?
Yeah.
Yeah, what we've got going and what we've established essentially today is that our, our meeting our meeting day of the month will be the first Monday of every month. We hold together everybody's schedule, so that's it, so we're hopefully looking for our first week and summer to be the first meeting, so we're on our way. That's it for now.
There's no, no other updates or reports, we'll move on to agenda item nine, business. Review and possible action on fiscal year and end of year transfers. Those education fiscal year twenty twenty-five, end of year additional appropriation and A, three town government fiscal year twenty twenty-five, end of year transfer between towns.
Thank you. Jeff Joka is here as well to review these, but we have, as you pointed out, three items for consideration by the Town Council, all related to closeout of the fiscal twenty-five year, so that's the year that ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. The first item you have is transfers within the general fund, as you can see, there's a moving around of about a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, as described in the material that we have in your packet. Allocating the contingency dollars that were included in the town's annual budget of fifty thousand dollars. Allocating funds out of social services in the amount of about eighty-one thousand related to salaries and again, out of salaries for parks and recreation, just under twenty-five thousand. And then moving that, as you can see, to various other lines in the town's budget that were over for one reason or another, as indicated there, Jeff has has provided more information on items that were more than a thousand dollars off from their budget for a variety of of reasons. So this would reconcile the budget, this is no change to the bottom line of the town's budget, it's just simply reallocating dollars within. Board of Finance reviewed this as well as the other items at its last meeting and recommended approval.
You worked on one by one.
You can do it however you wish, but if you'd like to do all three, then I probably shouldn't just explain all three, but
Yeah, I'm just asking going, you know, as you do them if you want to.
I think that's what it is, we do, sure.
There's a chair question. Um, at families, there's a lot, a lot of these were electricity rates being different and and increasing, is that kind of leveled out now for this next budget, are we or are we expecting that that's going to end up happening?
How many years did we get that deal? The new deal?
Uh, when we get it through twenty twenty-six, I think December first, twenty twenty-six is when our generation charge is, is locked in. I know when we go to the Board of Education, you're going to see the Board of Ed had has some over just electricity, they did bump up their budget quite a bit, their budget in twenty-five was about three hundred twenty-three thousand. In this fiscal year, twenty-six is five hundred forty-three thousand dollars. From a budget standpoint, I think they, they've adjusted it. The public benefit charge has kind of gone up and down a little bit, it's down a little bit. Again, and then there's, there's so many charges that are baked into the the utility rates. The virtual metering contract that we have, that's, that's helped us out quite a bit. For example, we've saved, I think collectively, close to seven hundred forty-two thousand dollars. It's about an even, about an even split. And that comes out to, I think the board is saving board is saving about seventy-seven thousand dollars a year, we've saved about seventy-nine thousand dollars a year. So it would be that much worse if we didn't have that virtual.
So the answer to that is sort of two parts, I think. We know, we knew that we had an increase coming, so we tried to deal with that in the current budget that we're in. We'll have to look at that again as we start to prepare for the next budgets, try and predict that, because we'll have in the middle of this fiscal year upcoming, we'll have a, another re bidding of our generation.
Is it possible to go longer term? Generation contract?
What it was bid, I believe that was, it was a twelve, twenty-four, and thirty-six, so that we we picked the thirty-six. And that was a mid-year, that happened December of of twenty-four. And we didn't anticipate, we went up. It would be in three or two. We did three, so it started in December. Okay. So that, that would probably run about thirty-four percent to thirty-eight percent of of an increase just in the, just in the generation charge.
Any questions?
Okay. So that's transfers, do you want to handle that, or do you want me to go on and do the other three, or other two items rather, and then you can talk about the rest?
Well, I'll move to make those transfers.
Second.
As suggested.
Any discussion, comments? If not, those in favor of motion to approve transfers within the general fund?
Aye.
Aye.
Those nay? Nice to have it, transfers.
Thank you. The next item you have is related to an additional appropriation. In this instance, this is an additional appropriation for the Board of Education, you can see on the material that's included in the packet, the total is five hundred forty-eight thousand dollars. Mostly allocated to special education costs for private, outside private schools to, for tuition for those. Various salaries related to that and transportation, and then as we just discussed, the the electricity and we're identifying both the high school and memorial school as having been considerably over. This is funded entirely by unanticipated revenue, so this is not dipping into the town savings, which would require a slightly different process. In this instance, we had unexpected revenues or revenues beyond expectation, perhaps is more accurate for investment income, taxes collected for past due, interest on those past due taxes. Conveyance taxes paid to the town clerk's office, that's for real estate property transactions, supplemental motor vehicle tax, so a fair number of our residents had mid-year acquisitions of motor vehicles, and then building permits continue to be stronger than we're budgeting for them at least at this point, to tune, in total, five hundred and forty-eight thousand to offset that. So the request here is to authorize an additional appropriation for the Board of Education in the amount of five hundred forty-eight thousand dollars.
Could I ask a quick question that you might, or might not really answer to?
Sure.
So when it comes to the electricity for the high school and memorial school, um, I know this year, the superintendent is, or Jeff is sending out budgets to actual on a regular basis and they're pretty, pretty tight, trying to stay on budget. Was there any notation done as to what they might have done to try to cover this within the Board of Ed budget without just asking for the town for the extra hundred and five thousand dollars?
Specifically related to electricity?
Yeah, or, yeah, I'm not, because I know that the, you know, the special ed, they're probably, you know, from the ECS, and I don't know how much we got. But did they try to live within their budget and then exhausted every option before just saying, give me a hundred and five thousand dollars?
I know that they have in the past done that, I don't recall specifically them having those discussions, I know last year I had for previous years when their numbers were much more significant. They had had conversations and made some, some decisions on, on expenditures. You'll recall that in the beginning of these discussions, they were probably more than eight hundred thousand or nine hundred thousand dollars off, so they made some strides during the year to bring that number in total down. I don't know, to be honest with you, whether they made any efforts related specifically to electricity, but I know that they made pretty significant strides on the overall number through the year, yeah.
Further questions, comments?
I would say that it's probably not lost, if I may, on the superintendent and perhaps the, the leadership of the Board of Education, that we're in a fortunate position, that we've been able to fund these with unanticipated revenues in the past, and I I'm sure that that the fact that those unanticipated revenues might not always be there is not lost on them.
No further questions, if they have motion for us. Those in favor?
I'm not sure you do, Mr. Chair.
I know you do. Did anyone make a motion to?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I was a step ahead of Jack, I thought. Excuse me. Any comments, further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye. Those nay? Nice to have it.
Thank you. The last item in front of you is the transfer of monies between funds in the, in the town, rather, my bigger pardon, in the town utilizing, again, in this case, under expenditures from basically general fund activities or operational activities and moving some dollars to the Capital Reserve Fund or to the Special Education Reserve Fund to cover some things that are upcoming. The, the first one I'll mention is the transfer to the Special Education Reserve Fund. This is to add to dollars that we put in last year using surplus monies to create a bank of about four hundred thousand dollars that can be used in the future, should we find ourselves in the position of need to fund special education operations that exceed budget or that are not reimbursed by the state through its funding programs. Those funds are being held and and made available for that, so we're asking that the town allocate another hundred and sixty thousand to bring that total, as I said, to four hundred thousand. The other three items relate to some activities that are ongoing, as you, as you are aware, there was an issue with the memorial school boiler. It is a forty-year-old or nearly forty-year-old piece of equipment that had some pretty catastrophic failures in the last several weeks. The Board of Education has gone ahead and ordered that replacement boiler and we're requesting funds to back that, that purchase now, using the using surplus dollars from this year into the Capital Improvements Fund. There is a second boiler there that is the same age, they'll run that through the, the replacement of that and it'll get run through the normal Capital Improvements Fund process through the committee, through the Board of Finance, and then to the Town Council. But this is an emergency replacement, and since we have the opportunity, we'd like to go ahead and fund that, using that surplus. The other two items relate to activities on the general government side. We decided to allocate, if the council is interested, twenty-five thousand dollars from those dollars to do some work in this room again, to maybe simplify it, we've talked about eliminating the owl cameras, getting better quality cameras that are perhaps mounted away from the front of the dais, making sure that we have audio as in a good place and it's in a consistent place. So we're just asking for twenty-five thousand to be allocated there. And then the last item is, is really an estimation or an allocation to the Firehouse Sighting Committee, so that they have dollars to bring in professionals should they need them for either environmental evaluation, appraisals, professional design concepts, things of that nature, as it moves through its business to move to making a recommendation to the town and to the council. uh, to move to making a recommendation to the town and to the council. So we're allocating or proposing to allocate seventy-five thousand dollars to that uh, purpose as well.
Questions, discussion?
All their contracts are still going to come through the council, correct?
Which contracts are we talking about?
For the uh, firehouse committee?
Yes.
And just
Assuming their value is high.
Yeah. And I just, just a comment. Um, you just said that the, the oil was almost forty years old or thirty-some years old. Um, is there a reason why that with an expected life of that or less, that they didn't start putting it in capital within the last, you know, five or so years? I mean, because they're looking at now five, oh, close to five hundred thousand dollars in two years, um, that they probably should have had in their capital budget.
Are you talking about a single item in the capital budget, or are you talking about sinking funds?
Um, either or, uh, you would think that they would have started, you know, maybe a thirty years if they had a thirty-nine-year life or a sinking fort or something, it, you know, prepared instead of coming to the council hat and hand saying, we need two hundred and forty thousand dollars immediately because we have no heat, we're working on our backup. And oh, by the way, we're going to ask you for another two hundred and fifty thousand for next year. Uh, you know, i- if you did that in your personal life and just, you know, there'd be a problem and why is it that it's just continuing?
And so I'll, I'll uh, comment on two things there, one, I think that uh, as the Board of Education has tried to get a handle on all of its facilities uh, under the new facilities director, uh, we've put a lot of things out in front of uh, the capital committee and through the capital process, and we've had to move things down the line. Uh, you're right, this particular item didn't come up, uh, I don't know whether it just didn't get on the radar screen or what, but clearly it is now. Um, the only other comment I'll make about sinking funds is that that's a notoriously difficult uh, activity for uh, many municipalities and in particular, perhaps the town of East Hampton. Uh, unfortunately, as we make decisions, uh, moving through how much we're going to tax our residents, um, the low-hanging fruit often is putting monies aside for a future reading. So it's a challenge either way, it's a perfectly appropriate res, uh, question however, because it is the more desirable way to go. Uh, and we have been more successful in putting dollars away for the future, uh, in recent years than we have been in the past, so perhaps that trend will continue.
And it's funny because you, you have, you know, the special ed fund, which we're obligated to fund anyway, that they're, they're doing a sinking fund for. And I mean, this goes back ten years, but we, we put a sinking fund to refurbish the track so people could run, but we don't worry about the heat in the building, and it, it seems like we have a little missed on the priorities there.
I think it came up at the capital committee last um, last time. And um, we had a lot of capital needs. And it didn't make the list.
Sure. Our little bird has indicated you might have some say in that this year, so I look forward to your comments. Anyway, that's the proposal, five hundred thousand dollars of surplus assigned to those uh, particular items.
Questions? Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion to accept?
Yeah, to accept the recommendation. We'll allocate five hundred to the four items.
Other questions? You know, those in favor signify by saying aye. Close nay?
Thank you. If I may, uh, the chief would like to talk about those general orders with you, I'm sure.
Didn't we pass those?
It looks like it's the gun, the stun guns or whatever you call it, EW something, it looks like the E W change.
Excuse me, excuse me, moving so rapidly, I
Chief may apply. Three point one.
You may. New business, item nine B, reviewing possible action on police department general orders. Three point one, use of force, and five point two-three, use of body warm and flash forward cameras.
I will invite the chief up to come and talk with you about those policy changes and updates uh, from post.
Uh, good evening, uh, as always, thank you, uh, tonight before you, you have two existing general orders uh, that I'm here to request uh, minor modifications to. The first one is the use of force general order. Um, Axon or Taser has developed a new Taser. Um, it's called Taser ten, that's classified by the ATF as a firearm. So the inspector general's office, when a police officer deploys what's classified as a firearm, they obviously come in and do the investigation. Post has decided to specifically eliminate the Taser ten classification as a firearm, so when an officer uses it, it's still investigated, it's just not investigated by the office of the inspector general. So that's the change, the minor change in that general order. Uh, the body worn camera general order, again, an existing general order. Um, we're mandated by law, by statute, to have the uh, body worn camera, car cameras recording during certain times. They specifically made an exemption that, that the body worn camera can be turned off during certain investigations, specifically ones like sexual assaults where the victim does not want it recorded. Uh, a notation has to be made in the report that the victim wants the recorder stopped, and then we can stop the recording. Both of them, both general orders, uh, again, very minor modifications. Uh, and that's what's before you tonight. You know, any questions?
Um, just in general, on general orders, does post, do they review them when you create them, or is that something that they review them when you do the accreditation process?
Good question, so throughout the year, post sends out what they call general notices. Um, and when the general notice comes out, they expect you to change any of your policies or procedures to be in compliance with them. The body worn camera specifically and the use of force are standard uniform policies that post has put out that we had to adopt. We could make them more restrictive, uh, but we, we had to at least adopt what they put out. Uh, so the general notices sometimes modify regardless of accreditation. Uh, and then the general notices sometimes come out specifically modifying a general order to be in compliance with the accreditation standards. Uh, if that makes sense, so the general notices, uh, they don't come out that often. But when they come out, we have a certain time to comply with them, that's a good question.
Um, and then on the body recording, on the body cameras, um, is it, would also apply to something like, you know, if, if a parent was calling about an incident with minors and they didn't want that recorded when the police officer came out? Is that something that the police officer makes that decision if it's okay to turn off the camera in those cases?
So it's case by case, but um, I think maybe we are going at, if we go to a house and a resident requests us to turn off the camera and it doesn't meet the criteria, we can't turn off the camera. Uh, but there are certain situations, certain situations where you can. If we don't turn off the camera and the camera video footage is requested through the freedom of information, we have the ability to redact audio and also video, which we've done.
Right, just in, you know, certain situations might be more sensitive than others.
Absolutely.
The person might not want that shared depending on what's discussion.
Absolutely, just because we have it doesn't mean we have to share it. Um, specifically medicals, um,
Right.
violent scenes and stuff like that, uh, good question. Yes, sir.
I want to follow up on that because um, since it is on sexual assault, will the off, it says that they can request. Um, now, I'm assuming in a trauma situation, the last thing they're going to be thinking about is whether they're being recorded or not. Is that something that is going to be offered by the officer in those situations? Not to record it, instead of someone that is being, has been just traumatized and has all kinds of things, having to know that this is a procedure for the East Hampton P D, that they have to know that they have the ability to shut off the, the camera.
So I will answer the question by, the officer's under no obligation to tell them that they can request it. Um, and it's it's a statewide policy, it's not E H P D policy. Certainly, if it is recorded and someone requests it, we always could look into the possibility of redacting it. Either redacting the audio or redacting the video or both. So we go through that anytime we get a request for a video. Usually it's for an arrest that has occurred. Um, when we go through there, I'll use this as an example, um, we had an accident involving a juvenile. Uh, the juvenile uh, was struck by a bus and now, um, all the lawyers wanted the video. Well, we did not release the video of the juvenile's faces, so we had to go through and redact them all, so we, we do go through means where that private information doesn't get out, information about the juvenile's identity doesn't get out. Um, it's, it's relatively an easy task to redact. Hopefully that answers your question.
Further questions? Motion?
Motion to approve general order three point one and three point five, three, five point two-three.
Motion made in second to approve the general orders, three point one and five point two-three. There's no further discussion of questions, those in favor signify by saying aye. Close nay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And item ten, then, town manager.
Thank you. Uh, as always, my written report is on the town's website in a couple of locations. Uh, we included with this agenda and on the town manager's page. Uh, I'll, uh, mention three things specifically that are here and then, of course, take questions. A couple of opportunities uh, included herein for residents to hear information and in particular for the town council and uh, perhaps others to hear more detailed information. Uh, in, in particular, the H, uh, the Board of Education will receive uh, its report on the first three schools that have been evaluated uh, for the indoor air quality standards and the H V A C standards. Uh, you'll recall that there was uh, a clearly significant contract left to review all of the schools from, for uh, their H V A C equipment and how well they are, are able to achieve the various standards that exist for indoor air quality. Uh, so they'll get that at their next meeting, that is the Board of Education's next meeting on uh, November twenty-fourth, so Monday of that week. Uh, before Thanksgiving, so folks are encouraged, and if you're interested to uh, attend that and hear that report, uh, we'll also have uh, the final versions of the written documents available. Uh, and that will be a significant discussion in the upcoming years for capital improvements and how we tackle those, uh, those projects, uh, and, and undoubtedly significant costs that will come with them. Uh, the other thing I will mention specifically is another piece of good news, I was fortunate enough to uh, mention to you that the police department was successful in hiring a certified officer a couple of weeks ago. I get to make that same announcement again. Uh, Dennis helped me with the officer's last name. Where's the emphasis?
DT.
The last name.
Paventa.
Paventa, okay, Orlando Paventa is joining us from another organization in the state. Uh, he is a younger officer, so he's early in his career. Uh, but nevertheless, he has finished his training, has done some field training in that other organization, he's going to come here uh, starting uh, next Monday, uh, and serve uh, here in East Hampton, so we look forward to a long career from Officer Paventa. Uh, and the last thing I'll mention is another piece of good news that uh, is something that we've been able to announce for the last thirteen years. And that is that our finance department once again uh, presented to, to the community an award-winning uh, end-of-year financial report. Uh, we submit those materials to G F O A, the Government Financer, Finance Officers Association for review. Uh, they are peer-reviewed by uh, that entity and those uh, individuals. Uh, and we have received a certificate for, of excellence for uh, in or other financial reporting for our audit, uh, so our so-called audit, our end-of-year financial report in our fiscal twenty-four, so that's a year ago, Jim, uh, the document that was finished then. So kudos to uh, the folks in the finance department and our auditing firm who worked to um, review that material, but in particular to Jeff and to uh, Valerie Hyde in his office uh, and to uh, the folks from the Board of Education that contributed to that as well, so. It's a good, a good document if you can wade through accounting speed. It has good information in it, there's even some stuff that laypeople can read and understand. So, good document and that's available, if there are any questions, I'll certainly answer them, otherwise that is my report.
There's at least three of us that are able to read through them and probably understand.
That's true.
And uh, it is, it has a plethora of information. I would recommend not only to the public, but to the, all the council members to review that report as part of the budget process.
They are all up on the council website in the finance department's area, if you'd like to look up them online, otherwise Jeff, I'm sure can produce a copy for you. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions, further questions, Mr. Chair?
I just want to thank our Parks Department and all of everybody who works there, they did a fabulous job with Hummer Tree again, the kids all had a great time, um, so I thank them for that.
That's it. Thank you.
Moving on. Item eleven, appointments. First, uh, I wanted to point out that we do not, we will have all candidates for moderators at our next meeting. We only have one, if I understand it. That's Alan Hurst at the moment, but we intend to build one or two more.
We don't have anyone yet. Working on it.
We'll go to work on it. Thank you. Uh, you also have, I, I passed out three pages of assignments, if you will. The only one that requires vote is the subcommittee appointments there. Those appointed in the town council, that's page one. The appointment committee, personnel committee, the budget policy committee, the bylaws committee, and the capital improvements committee. If you don't like your, where your name is placed, work it out with somebody else. Tried to give, by the way, everyone who submitted their request or preference, to give them their top preference if possible. I think I was given that.
So did you need a motion to approve this?
To, just the page, page one.
Yeah, I moved to, uh, with the modification that Rich's
Name is.
Not on the capital improvement. I moved to approve the subcommittee appointments for the town council. Um, with the exception that Rich Nodick is not on the capital improvements committee.
Your second.
Second.
Is there any discussion, questions? Not, those in favor?
I don't know.
Close nay? That's your liaisons are strictly uh, chairman's selection. Again, I tried to um, accommodate as many requests as possible. The only one that was and no one seemed to quite request was the Board of Education. Now Ted, you, you did bring up some questions about the Board of Ed, do you want to switch with me? And you'll become the liaison to the Board of Ed?
That's quite right.
You sure? I don't want you to come back at me later. And I, I should point out liaisons are not members of the boards or commissions, you're there to observe, to get information and share that information back to your council. And the third page that you have our own already means that task force in place and operating, and that's just for your information. We all sat there, did we vote?
Mm-hmm.
Are there any other appointments?
By all the, uh, to be honest with you, and I think you answered it, uh, to some degree on the third page, uh, relative to like, uh, Jordan being on the senior center in services task force there. He, he did approach me, uh, last meeting and said that, uh, he, he understood that he was there originally as a member of the town council, uh, which was in accordance with the ordinance to start that up. And he just wanted, he wanted to stay on that committee. And I said, well, okay, we'll, we'll square it away here at the, at the council. So, uh, I don't know if you need a, uh, and certainly he's not on the council any longer. But I don't know if that should.
But there's vacancies, so can't you just take the vacant and then someone from the council, we need a council person to run that?
Yes, or you follow the hearing, Ted?
Do we, we need a Republican, don't we? Is there minority representation on that board?
But there's, yeah, there's independent and there's, uh, two, so there's three.
Yeah, I think, I think there's enough. I guess my point is, uh, if you wanted to stay on, you didn't necessarily need to be chair. Uh, but I, I would move that, in fact, we, uh, keep him on the committee and let him finish out the term of the, uh, of the task force as chair. You know, they support him, uh, very well, and that's, that's what I would recommend.
Maybe, maybe could I suggest you modify that and just empower the chairman to fill the position in the next two?
What is the, what did the actual, um, uh, thing say? Because typically it is the council member that is the.
Well, it would be a council member.
Right, but typically the, the council member does, uh, chair those type of committees and since he's no longer on the council, you would think that that would be something that the board, you know. I don't know, what, what does it say on the original resolution?
Uh, the original resolution with respect to town council, uh, indicates that, uh, in, in talking about the members of the task force, two of the members shall be members of the town council evenly divided by the political parties and who shall serve as the co-chairs of the task force.
Alright, so it means that it has to be someone else and, you know, right? That would have to have two council members. So, um, vacancy that's been there is, was, was kind of have some position that was not filled, which you like.
Yeah, when we set it up, it was, it was.
I agree. I do quite a bit of this.
I know, that's why I pointed you.
So again, I ask, are you volunteering?
Uh, yeah, that's.
Why? I volunteer him.
I guess. I'll.
But based on what David said, we need to have a second.
Yes, he's gotta come on, though, and he has to have, and somewhat, so why do you guys have to step up too?
Okay, you know. Well, what are you, Dave, what are you reading off the original, uh, resolution?
This is the resolution that created this.
And what is it, what is the, your term ending for the task force? Do you see that on there by any chance?
It was going to report in January.
This January coming up?
Yeah.
You know.
And then, but I think it wasn't over till, till end of the summer.
I know, but I think I'm just saying, if it says that, unfortunately, that's, that's what is.
I mean, not really.
Unless the resolutions change.
There you go. There you go. Yeah, you know, they work so well together. We've, on that, on that commission. Uh, yeah, I've had members on that, uh, task force rather, uh, in fact, say that. That, uh, in fact, they, uh, they felt Jordan was a good leader. Uh, I feel the same way. He was on the council. You know, if we can't amend that resolution to allow them to continue for two more months, three more months, you know. I think that's pretty, pretty crappy.
I mean, I thi- I think he's done a fine job, right? I don't, I've never heard a complaint about it. He's been doing.
He's doing a great job.
Yeah.
He's doing a good job, too.
Is the concern that you would like another council member on? Cause we could have.
No, I don't even need to go on. That's fine. If these, if they're good with what they have and they're working well together, there's really no point in adding any members to the group. If they're working well together, why add someone for two months? Uh, you know, if you want to change the resolution, just eliminate the need of two council members and then let them do their thing. I, I, I have no problem with that.
But what is the resolutions? I don't believe the resolution dead ends in January.
Yeah, it's, uh, the language says, um, the task force shall conduct the work as outlined herein and shall provide a report to the town council not later than January thirty one, twenty twenty six. At which time, the task force may be extended by further action of the town council.
Right.
That's just done.
Which means it will be unless we actively continue it.
Right, so I mean, uh, there's no point in putting two new people on for three months. Uh, you know, so I would say at our next meeting, maybe have a, adopt, uh, change the resolution to remove the council members from the need for being on the, the task force.
I mean, I guess what I would recommend though is that we clearly communicate to that task force, all the members, that it's not our intent to degrade it or to not necessarily continue with.
Oh, I don't think they'll think that. I think that they'll think that we're doing it in their favor.
I guarantee you.
They're gonna think that we're doing something to.
They, they would, they want, they would like the positive feedback. They would like to know that it is not our intent to just get a report and file it. That we intend to handle the problems, unders- to, in some way, work on the problems that they're going to. They would like to know.
Oh, uh, but that's, that's for January, whether it can continue or not. And I'm just saying.
I'm not saying we need to do something now. I'm saying we need to communicate.
Oh, yeah.
Communicate that this is not the end of the road.
Jeff, the only thing I would like, I, I think, is that somebody from there to obviously give us feedback. That was the only thing when we had somebody sitting on council, sitting there, they would give us some feedback.
I would like to see you or Ted be.
That's only building on, if, if, we don't have somebody in town council, but I'd like to have somebody come and give us, uh, some type of feedback once in a while, what's going on and.
They have.
Okay, that, that's the only thing I'd like to see.
As long as they just, I mean, again, we're gonna get a report in two months, yeah.
Yeah, let's wait till we get the report, hear it, and then go move forward.
Yes.
Well, points taken under consideration, chat would be members.
And then will this list be included in the minutes so that everybody can see?
Yes.
There are no more appointments for the evening. The agenda item twelve, Mr. Field.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to return two tax response totaling ninety five dollars even, they're already borned.
That's second.
Motion made and seconded to return ninety five dollars to tax payers as amended by the business services. Next, who's in favor?
I.
Item thirteen, public remarks. Is there anyone at this point who would like to make public remarks? I see no hands raised. Moving on. Item fourteen, communications, correspondence and announcements. There's a bulletin with town manager on communications and correspondence. And I don't think there's anything else.
No, sir.
Fifteen. Motion, no, no. I move the, the motion, uh, the only one seconded session.
Um, I move that the town council, we assess to the purpose of executive section to one, discuss strategy and negotiate regarding collective bargaining. And two, to discuss a possible purchase of land. Further, the town manager, David Cox, chief, chief of police, Dennis Wissner, and Anthony De Simone are invited into the executive section meeting to provide information relevant for the town council, make and inform the decision.
And there will be no action taken after?
And there will be no session. Thank you. Zoom is the second to that.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
For clarification, they're each coming in for their respective parts.
For their respective parts. It's, uh, chief police.
They can draw straws if who gets the weight in the hall.
Is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay, moving to executive session, settle thoroughly.